Thank you.
Call to order, the Wilsonville City Council meeting for June 21st at 7:02 PM. And will the city recorder please lead us do the roll call?
Council Linville?
Here.
Council West?
Here.
Council President Ocreval?
Here.
Council Leehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President Ocreval, I will entertain a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Yes, I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. For mayor's business, just have a few things to go over. It's again been a really busy period and maybe in recognition of that and having just done our flag salute, the council is going to take the July 4th holiday as a vacation, so to speak. And so our next meeting will be Monday, July 19th, 2021. And there's a list of all the upcoming meetings in the packet. You have in your packet the listing of two people that I have recommended appointing to the, one of the boards and commissions, specifically the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee. Do I have a motion to ratify those appointments?
Your Honor, I can make that motion.
Council Linville, please.
I move to ratify the appointments of Natasha Hancock and Segura Boraville Abdallah Koya to the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee for a term beginning 7/1/2021 to 6/30/2023.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. And we're now to the point in our agenda to talk about the council goals. And we talked about this at our last meeting and went over some minor updates and those have been made. Everybody had those in your packet. And we spent a good long weekend working on these, looking ahead to the next two years and really beyond on some of those. And I would like to ask for a motion to approve the 2021 to 23 city council goals.
I move to approve the 2021 to 2023 city council goals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. One thing I wanted to point out, and I should have done this last week, is this beautiful annual report that has been produced for the year, the prior calendar year, 2021. And I really think it's a beautiful report. This has been mailed to all of our residents. And something really great about it that you'll find on this cover, it kind of has a stained glass look to me, but these photographs during our very challenging year of the wildfires, the COVID and everything, all of these photos were taken by citizens who submitted them for the urban forestry, urban forest master plan. And so it was a year where we were not all out there together, so it's kind of unusual. You're seeing trees instead of people. But I think it's a beautiful cover and there's a lot of detail in this plan. And Brian, city manager, and all of the staff who worked on this, I wanted to thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
And Bill Evans, our communications manager.
Happy with that addition this year.
Great.
And Your Honor, I would just say that I have spoken with several people who commented on, complimented us on that piece and have said they were going to save it.
Great, wonderful. And if you would like your own copy, if you live in a nearby city, you can find them in the lobby.
And on our website. And we do try to make it as much of a resource guide as a reporting out to the community as well.
Great, thank you. Recent things that happened, a lot of us were together this weekend on Saturday for the inaugural Juneteenth celebration at Town Center Park. And Juneteenth, as we've, we all heard, we did a proclamation on June 7th at a previous city council meeting. You know, it's a, it's a new national holiday now, celebrating the commemoration, or commemorating the date of the end of slavery in the United States. And we had a lot of people of all different ages there. And it was just a really nice morning. There were some speakers from the, a local organization, Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Communities, and some people who are on our soon-to-be meeting, they haven't even met yet, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And it was just a really nice day. So I just wanted to recognize that. And I think everybody wants to do something the following year. There was a notice in the paper, and you can find it on the website of Clackamas County recently, and I just wanted to point this out for our local business people, that Clackamas County, there are so many businesses that are hurting because of the COVID-19 crisis. And we're always hearing about various opportunities that could help them. And it depends on what type and size of business you are. But Clackamas County is just offering another round of $600,000 of business grants. And there's a deadline, June 23rd, so it's really coming up soon. I just wanted to mention it. And they're doing this in partnership with Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, and the grants are for a maximum of 7,500. So you can go to 4biz@clackamas.us, and that's numeral four, B-I-Z, to look that up. But if you know of a small business that wants to see how they could apply and what it takes to qualify, notify them of that deadline coming up on June 23rd. We had some, some big news recently regarding an issue of great importance to the city of Silverton, or city of Wilsonville for many years. And that is news regarding the Aurora State Airport. We learned last week that we won our Court of Appeals case that basically dismissed our appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals previously. And I would like to ask city attorney Barbara Jacobson to just give us a synopsis of the ruling and its importance.
Well, I think the ruling is important because for many years, this council and many, many citizens of Wilsonville have asked to have a voice in the future development of the airport. At the last master plan process, we felt did not give us that. And so that was the decision that was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The Land Use Board of Appeals found that the decision that our appeal was not timely effectively and that the process had been properly conducted and that a land use, the land use decision had been made and they, and affirmed by Marion County. And therefore, because it was affirmed by Marion County, it did not need to comply with state land use goals. And therefore, Luba did not have jurisdiction over it, which is an oversimplification in terms of explanation. But at any rate, the Court of Appeals disagreed with that decision and assigned four assignments of error, one of them having to do with the record and what was not submitted. And we had asked that the master plan that was allegedly, that was allegedly passed be included in the record. It was not. And the court's position was because it was not, there was no way to tell what exactly had been passed versus what is purported to be in effect today. They also found that the Marion County resolution supporting the master plan was not tantamount to including it in their comprehensive plan in a way that's required in order to meet land use goals. And they also made some findings about, let's see here, so I don't misquote this, misquote In terms of EFU, they found that the development, that the court in relying, or the Luba in relying on, that relied on ORS 836642 to conclude that the proposed uses at the Aurora Airport Plan are rural uses for land use, land use planning purposes. And the court said they are not and determined that other provisions should apply. They also held that, that the 2012 master plan did not propose, they found that, Luba had held that the 2012 master plan did not propose airport development on EFU land when in fact, there was evidence in the record that it did. So that's a very brief summary. I know that we have a couple distinguished citizens here from another jurisdiction who are with us on this appeal, and they may have some more to say about it, so I'll just stop there.
And let me ask our parliamentarian about this for procedure. Can we do that during mayor's business, or do we wait till the other section?
You could do it either way.
Okay.
It's not, it's not on your agenda. And then next item up is citizens' input, so whichever you prefer.
Next item up is communications.
Yeah, and then.
And then citizen input.
Well, if you'd like to do it now.
It's your call on this.
Certainly. I would like to invite our two guests to comment on this at this time. And we usually, you know, stick to about three minutes just to keep it consistent. And I'd like to introduce Brian Asher, who is the mayor of the city of Aurora, and Joseph Schaefer, who is with city of Aurora. Thank you. We'd love to hear from you.
And Joseph can elaborate on what I've said too, because he was, he especially briefed the issues.
They have both put a lot of time into this, are very close neighbors in Aurora.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak and want to publicly thank all of you and all of your citizens for being diligent in sticking to the rules of our government and making them come out the way that they are read. And Joseph will talk a little bit more about that. I hope he can hear me. I'm guessing you can.
Yes.
So publicly, want to thank Julie and Ben and Joanne and everybody, Kate Riston and Charlotte for being with us and taking care of our citizens to the south here and to our north. That the airport is an important thing for all of us, and we want to work together as a team. And we want the airport to work together as a team so that we can be, harmonize the community and work together and grow together as a big, one big, wonderful place to live. And let's want to continue that. So Joseph, you can do the major explanation.
Well, I'm also here to thank you. I'm going to thank the people that you have assigned to help us. That includes Barbara, of course, and Ryan Adams, your associate attorney, also Amanda Gail Hinman, your former associate attorney, especially Mark Ottenod, who does your government relations. Mark traveled over to Sun River with us in October of 2019 and gave terrific testimony on behalf of the city. And then also, former mayor Tim Knapp, who worked on this intensively while he was still the mayor and provided a lot of those materials and writings that Mark submitted for the city. And so we're just here to give a shout out to everyone and thank them for their help. Make sure you understood that lest anything else you hear going around, the Court of Appeals agreed with the city of Wilsonville's arguments. And the only things they didn't specifically rule in favor of us on, they just sort of punt it. If you get into the fine print, there's a few issues. Well, we don't reach this. That just means we're tired. We've already written 30 pages. We have a statutory deadline, you know, but we've said enough. So.
Actually 38, Joseph.
38, excuse me. So we're very confident in the ultimate outcome of the case. The case is not over. It's either going to go up to the Supreme Court or down to Luba. And then we have another case that's going sideways in the Marion County Circuit Court, where papers are being filed later this week. And so it's a complicated thing procedurally, but in my humble, non-legal opinion, we won. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was wonderful to have you here and we'll see you again. And you're welcome to stay.
All right. You're welcome. For a little while, thank you.
Well, on that same subject, I will continue a little bit. We learned in early June that the Oregon Department of Aviation intends to accept a nearly $1 million grant from the Federal Aviation Administration to fund, to fund more master, or master planning of the Aurora Airport. And this, this, this plan would be to comply with Oregon public process and land use law. And that's been a key objective for 10 years, whether it's an update or new plan, all of this, as you say, there's more to learn as time goes on. But we're glad to see that the aviation department intends to work on this plan. And we really look forward to a robust public process for our citizens to be involved. And we hear from citizens about their concerns about traffic, about environmental concerns and, and the type of activity there. And I think those are the things they want to be involved in. There, we, we have been invited, the city of Wilsonville, to be a member of a master plan, planning advisory committee, which is abbreviated as a PAC. And we were disappointed to learn that the city is really in a, in a minority there. There are many other interests and not as many community interests as we think would be appropriate. So we have written a letter asking for more balanced representation on that committee. And that request has been also backed by state representative Courtney Neron and state representative Susan McLean, who have written a letter to that effect and looking, looking for a fair and equitable and transparent planning process as we move forward. So that's what we're really looking for. And the kinds of, you know, balanced representation of, of all community interests. And that includes the interests at the airport, as well as local homeowners associations, community planning organizations, and conservation and nonprofit public interest organizations near there, as well as the city of Wilsonville and residents who live right near there. So thank you very much. And that's, that's all we have on the, on that topic, which is a big one. As far as activities, for myself in the role of mayor, it's been, I've had a number of different speaking opportunities. Rotary invited me to speak about our goals that we discussed a little bit today. We had a good conversation. And the main question I had from members of Rotary was about the Boone Bridge and when is that going to get done? And that's a good question. We're working really hard on it. It's a half a billion dollar project, so we're doing everything we can to get that funding front and center, to get it designed and moved forward. But it's, it's a project that could take quite a few years. I was also invited to speak to the Home Builders Association at their annual golf tournament at Langdon Farms, right nearby here. It was a really nice evening. They had a big turnout. And we talked about our, our big plans for more housing in Wilsonville. And I met a lot of members of the Home Builders Association. They were just a great group. Other meetings that we've had recent, that I've had recently, I met with representative Courtney Neron and Mayor Gibson of King City, along with some staff of King City, Sherwood, and some Wilsonville staff about the opportunities to, for our state representative to allot some ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan. And all of the, you know, cities and different organizations have submitted proposals to their state representative or senator. And so in that meeting, we discussed components of a proposed Sherwood-Wilsonville Ring broadband project. And so it's really a legacy project that would take the investments we have now in the ground for broadband and connect those up. We would be very collaborative with the Clackamas County infrastructure that's also already there, some of that, as well as Washington County. And it would extend the Sherwood broadband utility service with broadband, the broadband fiber background to Wilsonville. And it would connect with Washington County's network in Hillsborough. So the city network, the idea of it, it would provide high-speed internet access at the library and major city parks and make available broadband to the developing Coffee Creek area. So I am not an expert on broadband, but I've been to quite a few meetings on it now, so I'm a little tiny bit better informed about it. And our IT expert, Andy Stone, is here. He's been in many of these meetings too. And one of my big questions was, well, how does this really, we're, we're putting the backbone in and trying to get it ready for future use. Once we have that in, we have an opportunity for private investment to come in there and have other internet services. Until we do that municipal investment, we really can't go forward. And it's one of the primary things that the ARPA funding is actually called out for. So there's more to learn about that. We have another meeting this week. I also met with Clackamas County Chair, Tudy Smith, had called together mayors in the county to meet with the chair of PGE regarding the power outages in the ice storm. They've done a tremendous amount of research and follow-up on, on how that could have been better managed. And we may be able to have them come give this presentation.
We are.
We are? Okay, great. They're coming to present to city council. It was a very interesting study about the types of trees that fell most often. Were they on public right-of-way? What can be done to present, prevent it? The big takeaway I had was that 96% of the trees that fell, and this is over a huge area, of course, in Clackamas County, but 96% of those trees were on private property and everything grows here. And they just grow really fast and tall. And so they're looking at ways to plan in the future for what to plant in those right-of-ways and how to manage them. So I'm glad we're going to be able to hear from them. I also attended yet another presentation by ODOT, and this one was with ODOT and Metro. And they were presenting a draft policy elements and measures proposed in this regional mobility policy update. And we will, I'm not going to go into detail on that because we will have more opportunity to hear that at a future city of Wilsonville council meeting in August. Went to a presentation on League of Oregon Cities, by League of Oregon Cities, about how we can spend the ARPA funds. And it's very complicated. We still don't have all of the information. But, and I think the main takeaway there is be, be very clear about making sure that you're not duplicating what somebody else is funding and that we're getting the most out of those for our citizens. At the last council meeting, I noted, sticking with the transportation topic, we talked about House Bill 3055. And that is a really big one for us regarding the I-5 Boone Bridge seismic improvement project. It's a priority facility for the Oregon Department of Transportation. And we're glad to know that we are in the, in the listing now with the other big projects as priorities. The I-205 Abernathy Bridge and the I-5 I-84 Rose Quarter projects, they are all top priorities. So long way to go on that. We'll hear more about it on August 16th. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, this is much more local, but I, we've been talking about our boards and commissions and have appointed people to those recently. And one of them that is really going to be able to get up and running more now that our COVID is getting under control is the Tourism Promotion Committee. And they have developed this website that we're showing here. And I encourage everybody to really take a look at this. I don't think they were trying to promote it that much in the last few months because not all the restaurants were open, not all the businesses were, were up and running because of the COVID restrictions. But it's a really great website that is operated by city of Wilsonville. And this committee, which is a combination of business people and tourism organizations and citizens in Wilsonville, put this together with a consultant, and it's called Explorer Wilsonville. So I encourage you to take a look at it. There are dozens of restaurants. You can click on the restaurant. It'll tell you the hours, how to get there. All kinds of different hotels and businesses are promoted here because we want our businesses to be very successful, and this is one of the ways we're helping them. So you can find this website at explorewilsonville.com. And if you have relatives who are coming to visit, this would be an easy way for them to take a look at where they can stay in Wilsonville and where they can go to dinner and so forth. And then there's a special feature they developed called Pocket Trips that are also on this website under Plan Your Trip. And so somebody could choose an arts and culture trip. It shows them where to go. They could go to local wineries and arts and culture shopping all around this area. So I'm really impressed with that, and I just wanted to share some of the updates.
It includes Aurora.
And it indefinitely includes Aurora restaurants.
Well, and, and other features.
Features in Aurora is in our, our travel circle. And in fact, I just had dinner in Aurora the other night with some old friends, and it was a great time. So that, that is it for my mayor's report. I'm sorry that was so long. That reflects all the meetings. I'm busy. So with that, I'd like to move to the communications department, or communications section of our meeting. And we have Ryan Adams to present.
Beth, you have me up here, is that right?
Yeah, that's fine. Project into the mic a little bit.
So the DOD has an award called the God Employer Award. And several months ago, I nominated Ms. Jacobson and Brian Montalvo for that award based on their kindness to me and to other employees that are with the city, one of whom is deployed right now, for supporting our military service. And so the DOD has representatives here today, and they have decided to award that to the city and specifically to Mr. Cosgrove and Ms. Jacobson. And so from me and from Mr. Montalvo and from all of the other employees here that are in the military, we want to say thank you. Thank you for supporting our country. Thank you for supporting our service. We don't take that lightly. And Major General Klein and Mr. Hugland?
Getlin.
Come on up, if you don't mind, and we'll do the award presentations.
Let me make a couple of comments first, if I might, before, before I introduce General Klein. And I promise it won't take too much of your time.
Sir.
I've already said that before.
As a, as a former enlisted person, it's hard for me to ask an officer to do something. But could I ask you to speak into the microphone? And could you state your name and, yeah, just state your name for the record as well?
Yes, my name is Lon Getlin, and I am the Director of Employer Outreach for ESGR. Everybody in here, of course, knows what ESGR is, so I don't need to explain that. Well, I probably do. ESGR stands for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And as Ryan mentioned, we are a Department of Defense organization program. That's why we get to wear these cool patches on our shirts. And we were founded in about 1972. And our purpose in life is to do anything we can to support a good relationship between employers and members of the Guard and Reserve. We all know, particularly with the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, how terribly important our service people are to us. And the roles that the Guard and the Reserve have played in these wars in Afghanistan and Iraq is just monumental. And so it's a great opportunity for folks like us to have an opportunity to recognize people like, like Barbara and Brian for the support that they give our servicemen and women. I'm here with General Klein, who's a major general retired. That's a two-star general, for those of you who are not involved in the military. Now, General Klein looks like a pretty mild-mannered person, I will have to admit, but actually, particularly for a two-star general. But you should also know that he was, he was in the Special Forces, so we all know that those folks are pretty tough hombres. He retired as a line manager from PGE. All of us in ESGR are volunteers, and we're divided into what ESGR calls committees. And each state has a committee. And there's a committee chairman and then other volunteers below the committee chairman. And General Klein- And General Klein is the chairman of our Oregon State Committee. I have brought with me a brochure that has my business card in it, my ESGR business card in it. I'll encourage anybody in the council or any of you folks out here who own businesses or who are involved in HR to pick up one of those brochures. And if you have any questions about what we might be able to do to help you support members of the Guard and Reserve, I have a telephone number in there and my email, and I promise I'll get back to you within 24 hours, and we'll come out and sit down and visit and answer all your questions. Again, Ryan, thank you so much for bringing us in and enabling us to recognize Brian and Ms. Jacobson, and we're thrilled to do that. So with that, Dennis, it's all yours, sir.
Okay.
Here are my brochures. I'll just leave them where?
Kim.
Well, thank you all for giving us a few minutes to present these awards. The one thing that Lon left out was that here in Oregon, we have about, it fluctuates from day to day with COVID, but we have 80 volunteers. We only have one full-time person that supports all of us. And we all do this because it's a love affair for us. You know, this is, for me, it's giving back. I got so much out of the military. I started as an enlisted Marine and was able to go all the way up through the ranks in the Army Reserve, and it's something that I really appreciate. Of course, my wife didn't always appreciate it, but we often talk about the times when I wasn't around. And, you know, this is what we're here to honor you for today is the fact that, you know, we've had some absences here, and we want to recognize that as it, with our Guard and Reserve folks, as Lon said, these mobilizations are going to continue. It's just a fact of life nowadays. It didn't used to be. And they just pop up all of a sudden. And it's, we really appreciate employers that go the extra mile to support all these folks that are standing up to serve their country. And with Guard and Reserve members, it's, they have a lot on their plate. Most are married and have families, they have jobs, and they also serve. And some of them even are attempting to go to school at the same time. And that's a lot on their plates. But for employers, that also, it brings a lot to employer because they've learned how to organize that and get to where they're at. So we really appreciate everything our Guard and Reserve does do for us. ESGR supports all seven of the Reserve components. And here in Oregon, we have units with all seven. And that's the Army Guard, the Army Reserve, the Air Guard, the Air Force Reserve, the Navy Reserve, the Marine Corps Reserve, and the Coast Guard Reserve. And that's a little bit of a rarity for ESGR to have that many organizations under us. But we've got a great dedicated group of volunteers, and we're going to keep moving on to support all of you. And I would say one thing about these awards, we're going to present two Patriot Awards. ESGR has a series of awards, and they escalate on up. The top award, ESGR, is called the Freedom Award, the Secretary of Defense's Freedom Award. This is a very prestigious award. There are only 15 of these given out each year. And they're actually, well, before COVID, everybody was flown back to the Pentagon where the Secretary of Defense actually presented this award. We have not had an awardee here in Oregon for about five years. The last one was the Clackamas County Sheriff, who just retired. So we've been working real hard to find an employer that we can keep pushing on up the ladder. There are three categories here that you can compete in. One is a large business, one is small business, and another one is a government agency. And we, as our committee, actually picks from the candidates that come to us. We had close to 30 applicants this year from various Oregon businesses, and we had to pick three. And that's pretty hard to do. We've picked, Nike was our top one for the large business. Gibson Doran Millwork, which is a small business in Clackamas, was our small business. And the Secretary of State's auditing division was the government entity that we decided to pick. And I'll be presenting that award later this week, and the Secretary of State has said that she's going to be there for the award, so that's great. But anyway, thank you all for supporting us and supporting Adam, and we'll present these awards.
Mayor, would you like to maybe go stand by Ryan?
Should I?
Right there is perfect. I'll have the mayor join you.
Well, you're getting an award.
Yeah, well, I'll come over and join with Barbara, and then maybe we could get Gina to snap a picture for BFM for Bill.
We'd like to get a picture too, so we can put her on our Facebook.
Perfect.
We've got to get credit for this.
Yeah, did you want to read them first?
Yeah. Why don't you let me do that? And it's very short. These are Patriot Awards, and it says, "For contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force." And of course, this one, the first one here is for Barbara. And the second one is for Brian. They both read the same. And we also have what we call a statement of support, and I'll leave that to, okay.
Yeah, the mayor. You should hold that.
Is it Marine or Army?
Uh, Army. Sorry.
Surely should hold that.
Oh, yeah.
We'll give Barbara the first one.
Oh, get it off the end.
Okay, so, what's the?
Yes, we'll do that one too.
We'll get Brian holding.
Yeah, well, let me just do one for you. Yeah, you should just, I'll just hold them.
Do a big group picture.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody hold one.
All right.
All right. All right. Next.
The mayor gets the city. Yep. Yep. Now, you better write that one for us. You're the only one who's watching.
We went down.
One, two, three.
One more. Does it work?
I know how.
If you have no idea, I'll root mine out.
Okay, you ready? One, two, three. Can we zoom in just a little bit? One, two, three. See, I like your camera better.
All right, thank you very much. My parents lived at Charlestown a few years on the 90s. And yesterday I was at the baseball field over in high school with my grandson down there at eight o'clock in the morning.
Hey, Mayor? Did you want to, did you want to take a quick break?
Yes, I would like to take a quick break.
All right, that way you.
Do we need to do an official recess or just?
Yeah, you could just recess the meeting for five minutes.
Do I need a vote for that? Could I have a motion to recess?
I move that we recess our meeting for five minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I may, I really encourage you who look at the brochure that I gave you, if you have any questions, if you want to talk about.
We're reconvening the meeting after a short break at 7:44 PM. And we're now ready for the Citizen Input and Community Announcements section of the meeting. I think I need to read this section, but, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is an opportunity for visitors to address the City Council on items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the City Council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during Citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and you can raise, use the Raise Hand feature of Zoom to let us know you would like to provide comments. Do we have anyone? We do not have anyone waiting. Okay? So we'll move on to Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports, and Meeting Announcements, starting with Council President Kristen Ockervale.
Thank you. Let's see, in the last few weeks, I was able to attend a few events. I think most recently, the Juneteenth celebration that was in our Town Center Park. And just a big thank you to staff and our community members that helped organize that event. It was, it was a great day, and it really did feel like the start of something that was very promising and hopeful and a cool event going forward. Lots of possibility there. So thank you to all that attended and was involved in that. I also was able to attend Kathy's retirement party on Thursday, and she is now, our former finance director, is now into retirement in California, I believe. Yes, she served the city very, very, very well for many years and have great appreciation for what she's given our city. I was able to listen in on the Washington County Coordinating Committee, actually, the Mayor Fitzgerald participated in that June meeting on June 14th. And I was able to actually speak at an Eagle Scouts Award presentation earlier last week. And that, it's always a wonderful opportunity or experience to be able to recognize some of the achievements of the young community members. And so that was a privilege to be involved in that. But also reminds me that we have had many graduates in our community in these last few weeks on different grade levels and high school, Wilsonville High School, Arts Tech as well, and college graduates too that are part of our community. And so a big congratulations to all of the graduates in Wilsonville and looking forward to all the promising things that they will go on to do in service in our community and careers and life and all the fun that will follow. So it's been a full and happy last couple of weeks. So that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Leahman.
Yes, I was, unfortunately, I meant to, but couldn't, got tied up with other things, attend Kathy Roddicker's retirement, but she has been great to work with all this time. So sorry to see her go, but of course jealous that she's out having fun, and there you go. I did also attend the Juneteenth celebration, and I thought it was a great event. And I was told it was just a placeholder event, that the real event wouldn't be till next year, but this seemed like a real event. The city put a lot of effort into that, and we had good attendance at it. Two other things. One is, I say when it's saying about Patriotic Employer Award, I didn't, wasn't sure what that was before I got here. But I, but it made me think about, we are coming up, we're in between Flag Day and Fourth of July. And I, of course, keep hundreds of flags for various things at my house, but I wanted to remind people that when, this is an opportunity in here, because there are so many flags for sale everywhere, for you to upgrade your flag. Because when I drive around, you're not supposed to be flying flags that are tattered or faded. So if they are, this is an opportunity to change out that old flag for a bright new one for Fourth of July. And remind people that the proper way to dispose of a flag is another Eagle Scout project at the Town Center Park, where there's, they have remade an old mailbox into a old flag deposit place. So you can deposit your old flag, and they will properly dispose of it, the Boy Scouts. So that's just a reminder. And then the other big one is, I guess I could pass these around, but is the Boone Monument Dedication at the Butteville Cemetery on Saturday. Now, the last I looked, it was going to be 104 on Saturday, and we were originally scheduled for 2:00 in the afternoon. And today, I made the executive decision to move us up to 10:00 because it's much shadier and cooler at 10:00 than it is at 2:00, no matter what the temperature. So I am trying to get the word out that it is at 10:00, not 2:00, and we will have free ice cream at the Butteville store. This is probably a 30-minute event, so we won't be out there very long, and then we will retire to the Butteville store for free ice cream. And so if you're interested in the history of the Boones, this is an opportunity to stop by and see the new monuments, which are going in on Wednesday morning. These individuals, five of them, have been in unmarked graves for the last 150 years, as it says there. as it says there. And it's time that we marked them. Because Jesse is the, I think is the true founder, certainly, of Boones Ferry Road and probably also Boones Ferry. So he deserves some recognition, which he is not, is, he has hitherto not really received.
Well, I think being named after the Boone Bridge is gonna be better after it's replaced.
After it gets fixed, yeah. Yeah, he was probably, he's probably been embarrassed all these years that they stuck his name on that bridge.
So thank you for that. I think 10 o'clock is gonna be much more.
Better.
And councillor West.
I don't have much to add this, this week. I'm really excited that we had the, the Juneteenth celebration. I think it's fantastic that we've just made it a federal holiday to mark the official ending of slavery. Not the official ending, but the actual practical ending. And I did not make it to that event. We had, I celebrated my 15th wedding anniversary, so that, we did that. But I think it's fantastic that we're doing that going forward. And I know for a lot of people, like councillor Ockerwal said, it's the last day of school coming up. We were talking about that earlier. My son is done tomorrow. He cannot wait for the school year to be over. And I echo that sentiment. Congratulations to all our graduates.
Thank you. Councillor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I have a really short report this evening. I, I was fortunate enough to share in my grandson's high school graduation this past week. And so as a result of family obligations around his graduation, I was not able to attend both Kathy's, Kathy Rodiker's retirement or the Juneteenth celebration. So I was delighted that we had a good, good representation at both of those two events. And I did want to say congratulations to all of our graduates, both our high school and all of our, all the way down. We pulled out old pictures of my grandson when he graduated from preschool. And so those celebrations are going on with families all, all the way across our neighborhood. So the one important report that I have to give is that about a week ago, Governor Brown signed House Bill 2564, creating the new Willamette Falls Locks Authority and charting a path forward for reopening the locks. This was work that was done by the Willamette Falls Locks Commission long before I took the, my position on the commission representing Wilsonville. It's the result of about 15 meetings of the commission, visioning the future and the financial and management and security organization and looking at multiple fiscal models. So the commission under this House bill will continue to work for about the next 12 months. And the responsibilities are to serve as a body to advise the governor in appointment of the initial members of the Willamette Falls Locks Authority, provide advice and assistance to the governor or the Willamette Falls Locks Authority on orderly transition of responsibilities and development and implementation of state policies, and then other matters that, with respect to advising on the ownership and operation of the Falls Locks Project. That will be a very exciting thing when those locks are reopened. And I've had people ask me questions, well, what does that mean? And I said, well, it means you probably can go all the way from St. John's all the way up the river, about as far as you want to go. So, so it's pretty exciting. There's an additional bill that is House Bill 5534, which is the lottery bonding bill, which will provide a portion of the state's share of funding the repairs on the locks. And they, there was an 8:00 AM meeting on that particular bill that, with the legislature coming to an end in this session. That will be pretty important for that bill to be passed. So we're hopeful that, that will happen, so that there is funding. And then federal funding will come. The Clackamas County legislators are all continuing to push for that, that bill. So it's pretty exciting to see not just our local, but all of Clackamas County. So, and that's my report.
Well, thank you. That's great. That ties back to our Explore Wilsonville website that we talked about, because in future days, we will be able to have more business opportunities and commerce and helping our tourism industry and, and some heavy industry, perhaps also use the Willamette for transportation. So lots of good benefits there. We'll now move to our consent agenda, and I would like to ask the city attorney to read it, please.
Certainly. Minutes of the May 26, 2021, and June 7, 2021, city council meetings.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And now for new, under new business, will the city attorney please read Resolution 2905?
Resolution number 2905. A resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving an amendment to the city's first fee schedule, adding a wireless communication facilities section to the, to include planning application review fees, technical design review fees, and an appeal of decision fee.
Thank you. Council President Ockerwal, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2905.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2905. All in favor, say aye.
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 Excuse me, I didn't do discussion. May I?
Well, we can just see if anybody had anything they wanted to say.
Retroactively, does anyone have anything? Is there any discussion? Okay, I thought you were signaling for something else. So all opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And moving now to Resolution 2905.
6, 2906.
Resolution number 2906, SEIU Collective Bargaining Agreement.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 2906?
Staff is here, if you have any, if you have any questions from earlier this evening when we talked about work session. I don't know that you have anything new or revelatory to add.
Sorry, before we do the motion.
Any questions that you may have with staff.
Let me back up on that. So we have staff here to present and, and offer any background information on Resolution 2906.
I don't think there's a whole lot more to add, other than what we talked with you about earlier. The item before you is the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Wilsonville and SEIU Local 503. They are the union that represents our smart transit drivers, as well as dispatchers, and also includes our fleet employees. So this is a three-year agreement. And if I might take an opportunity to just thank the union bargaining team, Vince Espinoza and Jeanette Patton, they were great to work with. Bargaining's a long process, and it takes a lot of time and patience. So I appreciate the cooperation that they put into this and, and the agreement that's in front of you tonight.
So we can discuss this after the motion?
So I'll move to approve Resolution 2906.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Well, I would just like to add, I think I speak for the whole council in saying how much we appreciate the staff and the employees and all the wonderful things they do.
Thank you.
So all in favor of Resolution 2906, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move, we, next item is city manager's business. And I do want to say, sometimes you say you don't need to take time for that, but I do want to say that's a, I really encourage people to look at that report. It has so much great detail.
You're talking about the city, city manager reports?
Yes.
Yeah, most of the information by charter, all of it, that you're, you're supposed to get monthly is in there. And it is very detailed, and there's a lot of great information. And if you wanted to know what's gone on over the last 30 days in the community, that's the place to look. I tend not to want to carry on meetings much longer than they need to, so I try not to put a bunch of verbal talking. But I just, I want to say that the DI committee is having their first meeting on July 13th, I believe.
Great.
And that will be hopefully in person. I think that we've gotten all the vaccination cards, so that, that will be here at City Hall. So we're looking forward to some of the good work they're doing. And I just wanted to let you all know that I'll be out of the office starting Wednesday through July 2nd. On vacation.
It's a fitting follow-up to the ice storm and.
It really is.
It's 104 now.
It's time for me to go.
It's really hot.
Put my feet in the sand. But that young lady back there, Ms. Troha, is your main point of contact. If you don't have both of her cell phone numbers, do you have a burner phone too? She might have three cell phones, so you'll, you'll want to, you'll want to get those numbers.
Call Saul, call Gina.
Tonight, yeah.
All right, thank you. Gina and I have already made a plan to have a couple of phone calls, encourage anyone else to touch base with Gina. She's our assistant city manager and is on, she's on the case.
And because Zo is also out, and will be for a while, because she's getting married, HR admin folks will be helping anything that council needs. Mark Ottnutt is on standby as well as Bill Evans, so hopefully you'll have everything you need.
She's on her phone. Well, the reason I.
She is married, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
She got married Saturday.
They got it done. I just wanted to say one more thing about the city manager report, because there's a lot going on in Wilsonville, and I hear people asking, well, what, what's happening there? That has the list right there, so you can urge people to look at that.
And we do try and highlight those on the website as well, too, so we could probably do more of that.
Any legal, thank you. Thank you, and have a great vacation, city manager. Any legal business?
I think we've covered the legal business. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to adjourn the meeting, but before I do, I just want to highlight that we do have an urban renewal agency meeting immediately following.
That's right.
So I will now adjourn the meeting of the city council at 8:04 PM. I'd like to call to order the Urban Renewal Agency at 8:04 PM on June 21st. Could we have a roll call, please?
Member Linville?
Present.
Member West?
Present.
Member Ockerwal?
Here.
Member Leehan?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here. This is a time for citizen input. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency Board on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the board will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes and use the raise hand feature of Zoom if you'd like to provide comments. Do we have anyone? We do not have anyone waiting for that, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Will the agency council please read the title?
Consent agenda consists of the minutes of June 7, 2021, URA meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Under new business, will the agency council please read the resolution?
Resolution number 2318. A resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing staff to take necessary steps to create a single property urban renewal area for economic development purposes to be called the Twist Bioscience Wilsonville Investment Now Win Zone.
And now we're gonna have a staff report.
Yes.
I didn't ask for the.
Go ahead, Jordan.
All right, thank you, Brian. Good evening, Urban Renewal Agency. This is Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager, and I'm here with Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting. We're talking about the creation of a single property urban renewal district known as the Twist Bioscience Win Zone. Elaine is part of our urban renewal consultant team, along with Nick Popenoch of Tiberius Solutions. Elaine has worked with us in all of our existing three districts, and she also has authored the Twist Win Zone Plan and Report. So tonight, Elaine will be walking us through the process to create a new urban renewal district. So with that, I'll pass it over to you, Elaine.
Always helpful if I unmute, thank you. This slide shows the different urban renewal areas in Wilsonville. Wilsonville presently has three different urban renewal areas, the Year 2000 area, the West Side area, and the Coffee Creek area. The role of the Urban Renewal Agency tonight is to review the details of a potential new urban renewal or win zone area for the City of Wilsonville, and decide whether to forward it through the public review process of TIF zones in Oregon. The areas shown on the map here show the different urban renewal areas that are presently in operation. The Year 2000 area is shown in blue, and it is actually estimated to close in fiscal year in 2023. The area in orange is the West Side urban renewal area, and it is projected to close in fiscal year in 2025. The light green at the north of the map is the Coffee Creek industrial area, and that area is fairly recently established and will continue for a number of years. Next slide, please. The shot, slide shows the information on the different urban renewal areas in Wilsonville and the conformance to the statute for statutory limits on both assessed value and acreage. Again, the West Side and Year 2000 urban renewal areas are both over 400 acres, but those are destined to close in the near future. The Twist Bioscience Win Zone is only 4.4 acres. The total in urban renewal is about 1,022, which is 22.69% of the total city acreage. And again, that percentage will go down dramatically once the other two areas close. The frozen base assessed value is only 6.2% to 6% of the total of City of Wilsonville's assessed value, which is much lower than the allowed 25%. You can see on this chart, we do not have anything listed for the frozen base assessed value of this particular win zone area. And that is because we are splitting a building on the area, and the assessor will establish that frozen base assessed value once the area is actually established by the Wilsonville City Council. In any event, the frozen base assessed value will be only a fraction of the total City of Wilsonville value, and we do not expect that percent of total to go anywhere over 7%. So we know that it will continue to conform to the statutory limitations. Next slide. There is a prescribed statutory sequence for adoption of a new win zone or urban renewal area. That includes an urban renewal agency authorizing the plan and report to be sent out to the taxing jurisdictions, and that is what you are considering tonight. There is a 45-day comment period and consult and confer period with the taxing districts. The city anticipates sending that letter to the taxing districts by June 24th, and that comment period ending August 8th. There is a required briefing to Clackamas County. There is no action required by them, but there is a requirement to give them a briefing. On July. On July 14, the Planning Commission will hear the details of the win zone and vote on its conformance to the Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan. We have no anticipation that there will be any issues on that. On August 16, there will be a public hearing and city council vote on a non-emergency ordinance. That ordinance goes into effect 30 days after it is voted on. Next slide.
All right, thank you, Elaine. I'll talk a little bit about the Twist project and impact to the taxing districts. So I think the Urban Renewal Agency is probably familiar at this point with the proposed Twist project. Twist is looking at redeveloping around 200,000 square feet at the former Xerox site at Parkway Woods. And so this has been a question about what does Twist do and what will they be doing at this new facility in Wilsonville. I'm not a bio-scientist, but this I think is a simple enough explanation of what they'll be doing. They have a proprietary technology enabling them to manufacture synthetic DNA by writing the DNA on a silicon chip. And so the products that they create have a range of applications, including rare disease detection, oncology, and infectious disease. So at this facility in Wilsonville, they will be manufacturing genes and proteins that will help in the construction of what is called antibody therapeutics. This expansion will help to double their manufacturing capacity and employ a range of local talent, from PhD scientists to lab technicians to engineers. Twist chose to expand in Wilsonville due to our location's access to tech and bioscience talent, as well as the region's many advanced manufacturing firms. This project has been noted as one of the largest investments in the Portland region this past year. Biotech is considered a cluster industry where firms are often geographically concentrated and share resources and talent. With the big Twist investment in Wilsonville, it is possible that others will follow, helping to grow the biotech industry in Wilsonville and in the region. So what we're showing in this slide is our most conservative projection of what we think the net increase in assessed value from the improvements would be here at around 48.7 million, but it could certainly be higher than that. From the value that we show here, we are showing that the total taxes that Twist would be paying in their first year of operation would be $944,000 per year, but not all that would be subject to the WIN Urban Renewal District. Instead, around two-thirds of that, $597,000, is the estimate that WIN would receive in the first year. The difference is due to general obligation bond rates and local option levy tax rates. Those taxes would continue to be paid to the jurisdictions imposing them without being impacted by the WIN projects. So roughly about 63% of total taxes go into the WIN program, and the bulk of that would be repaid to Twist as a rebate, less than 10% administrative cost from the city to run the program. These are all showing taxes in year one, and this would be a seven-year program. The amount of money in each subsequent year would depend on how much the property value for Twist either appreciates or depreciates over time. So there's a little bit of unknown to this projection, as each piece of machinery and equipment will have its own depreciation schedule, and the exact amount that the building appreciates over time also has some uncertainty to it. So we tried to put a projection together with certain assumptions at the depreciation schedule for the equipment in the building. This chart shows the gross TIF distributed to the WIN zone and overlapping taxing districts during and after the WIN zone. The reason why the annual TIF revenue is shown declining for the first several years of the WIN zone is because the depreciation of personal property value is expected to outpace the appreciation of the real property values. You can see the taxing districts start to realize the tax revenue gains following the closure of the district around 2030, and these are revenue gains that might not have been possible or existed absent the urban renewal incentive. Thank you for your time, and again, tonight's action is authorize staff to send out the report and plan for public review, so it's not to adopt the plan. That will happen after the 45-day period starts and when we bring back the final report in August. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
We had a presentation about this earlier at the work session, and we also received a staff report about this, and I'd like to find out if any of the counselors would like to ask any further questions. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to approve URA Resolution Number 318.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded to approve URA Resolution 318. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 5-0. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Meeting is adjourned.